We are now going live.
Hello, this is Julie Bitzer, President of Ruston Association. I am calling to order the special meeting of the Board of Directors for July 30th of 2020. The agenda item is on our insurance renewal. I'd like to first establish quorum. And I believe that I have seen Bob Patrino, Treasurer, Sarah, Member at Large, Karen Anton, VP, and Hunter Woods-Dogwood, Aaron Webb, Tall Oaks, Lake Anne, and John Mooney, North Point. Have I missed anyone? I know that Tom was going, was not going to be able to join us tonight. So have I missed any other board members? Right?
Mike and all that are here, no, Mike and Ben are not.
Sorry. Okay, the first, my opening remarks are, I'm on vacation. I'm at my brother's house because it's the only place of internet and I can't put the dogs anywhere. So I'm gonna do the best I can. But those are my opening remarks. I'd like to motion to adopt the agenda for the evening, which is simply the insurance renewal. Might I have a motion? Second from Karen. Do we have any member comments?
We need to take the vote on approving the agenda.
I'm going to try to put the dogs in another room. You won't see me on the screen for a moment, but if you could go ahead and let the member comments to happen.
Can we take a vote on, on the agenda?
We deny.
I think in the absence of the President, it's the vice.
All those in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Nay.
Thank you, I'm so sorry. All right, you're in another.
The motion to approve the agenda has passed.
Thank you very much. I agree as well. So now we're on member comments. Thank you Karen for fixing that or whomever fixed that while I was distracted. So do we have any?
We haven't, nobody's actually signed up for member comments. But if anybody wants to either raise their hand virtually via the participant screen or on camera, I can unmute you.
That isn't me. All right, then let's move on. So the topic at hand is the Ruston Association Insurance Renewal. And Bob Patrino, would you like to frame the discussion?
The, the annual period for the insurance portfolio runs from July 1st through June 30th each year. In this year, we, our insurance broker Core Assurance Partners came up with a, a set of insurance policies that address what we believe the necessary policies to ensure the safe and sound operation of the association from an insurance perspective. And I, I would, I would say at this point, there was an increase of 55,000 over last year's. The difference would, would have been greater had we had camps. Because, and justifiably, Core Assurance left that out of the portfolio since camps were canceled. The other major change and either Zach or Doug, if I misrepresent this, please jump in. The dam policy was, was changed that the, the, the insurance limit has, has decreased from 10 million to 5 million. And although there was a decrease in the commensurate premium, we have essentially half the coverage that we had last year. And as I understand, the, the reason dam coverage, private dam coverage is, is expensive. Fewer companies are taking on that, on that risk. And because we have, we've been insured by our present company for a number of years, Core was able to negotiate continuation, but at, at the, at a, at a, at a reduced limit. Is that, is that a fair representation, Doug, or?
Yes, yes, it is. Bob, that's very accurate.
I have a question on that. So they agreed to do it. So we're, the reason we have a lower premium is because we have less coverage, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And we also didn't.
They were simply unwilling to give us higher coverage.
John, this is Zach Brandow. It's not that Hanover was unwilling, it's that the reinsurer who provided the coverage, Hanover provided the full 10 million last year, but reinsured the 5 million, excess of 5 million. And that reinsurer pulled out of the market. So Hanover wasn't allowed to provide any more capacity than the 5 million.
Okay, thank you.
And David Kerr, I know you and, and the Fiscal Committee reviewed the insurance renewal and you have also made some suggestions for the coming year in terms of actions getting a bit ahead of things. Because we, we didn't have much time to review in 2020, as I recall. And you've got plans to get that calendared better? That's a question.
That would certainly be our desire to do, to work on that with staff going into next year. One of the things we didn't see this year was the binder at all. We only saw a couple of slides. So that's another place where we need to improve. We did not see the binder at all.
Which is now in our Dropbox folder, I believe, correct? Hank, that was added into our Dropbox?
Yes.
Okay, good. So Doug and Zach, did you wish to go through a quick presentation? Or do you just want to entertain questions?
No, I think we'll be happy to give some, some additional background on this if it's helpful to the group. So we began working on this in as early as February of this year. I don't think that anyone will be surprised that COVID has affected the insurance industry just like it has every other business and industry in the country and around the world. And the insurance industry is no different. So some of the things that have occurred due to COVID is that we are getting pricing and responses and communication from insurance carriers later than, than we typically do. We have been fortunate and very privileged to handle Ruston for a number of years. Hanover for more than, we think it's more than 15 years. And there's a lot of benefit in that in this current marketplace. But even Hanover had a hard time getting information back to us as timely as we would like. Not an excuse, just a, a reality that we're faced with. So right now, we're seeing renewal numbers come in within 30 days. We would like to be out to you presenting the entire program that we delivered to you outside of 30 days. So you have all the time you need to look at it. And it is our mistake, I think, that we didn't realize the approval process that you all had to go through with the Fiscal Committee and the Board. So we've noted that and our apologies for not talking about it earlier. In the presentation that we reviewed with the Fiscal Committee back in late June, we talked about the state of the insurance market. And for this group's purpose, I'll just refer to page two of that. And are we sharing the screen now with you, page two? Or can someone share that, page two of our presentation?
Christina, can you get that up?
Make.
Does that need to be done in executive session?
So do you not want me to share that?
Know what page two is, so I don't know that I can.
Again, point of order. This is a pending contractual matter. It would be more appropriate discussed in executive session.
Okay. What, what part would you like for us to discuss or, or address?
And might I just ask Tony? So do you feel that we are at the point then of moving into executive session?
Without knowing Doug's presentation, if we're talking industry general things similar to like, then it's fine for open session. If we're going in and talking financials, coverage, things like that, what are in the four contracts or four quarters of the contract, that should be in executive session.
Tony, let us, let us try to do this. I'm sorry, go ahead. It looks like Sarah's joined.
Tony, since the presentation was done in fiscal and that's an open meeting, I don't think that was executive session?
I wasn't there for fiscal, so I'm not sure what they did.
Okay.
Well, we can't, we can't address, we can't address the state of the insurance market in general, which is general industry information first. And that's the only slide that is general in nature. And then we can hold any specifics about the program and premium and coverage and limits and values. If you'd like us to wait on that for, to participate in your executive session or however you'd like.
Dave, Kerr?
Just a note on that. I've been through two years of this. We have never done this in executive session. And two years ago, we had the complete binder in front of us and sat there and went through it in our meeting. So either we did it wrong then or we don't have to do it now. I don't know.
My, my understanding, Tony, is that though we may take such matters into executive session, we're not obliged to so long as it does not harm the, the association. Is that correct?
You're correct in your reading, John. It's may not shall.
So if this indeed has already been dealt with publicly, I would tend to continue publicly.
So let's get to the general state of the market, the insurance market. Perhaps that would give us some sense of, of where things are. And then we've got particular questions about our renewal pricing.
Okay. So the general state of the insurance market is that the market is hardening very fast. It has been hardening since a year ago at your renewal in, for the 1920 period. We talked about that then. And it continued to harden. And in our world, that means the prices are increasing. Coverage is constricting, carriers' capacity is limited. And there are fewer markets offering the coverage and the capacity that they did in the prior year. So we're going to talk briefly about the property, the casualty, the professional lines, and the umbrella specifically, what we're seeing. And then I can address your specific program and premium when we get to that point where you think it's appropriate. So Zach, if you maybe talk about the property and the casualty.
Sure. So, so we put together a couple of slides prior, just outlining from a third-party source, what the overall results have been year-to-date from Amwentz, who is one of the largest wholesale brokers that, that exists. They, they, they put out a report, which we're happy to share, it's public. Just noting that the average property increase year-to-date is around 16%. Casualty is around 13% and professional lines are around 10%. Now, that does not, it's not specific to anyone, industry or, or type of business. And if you have the summary, then, then we, we provided a more drilled down approach for, for your review, which is based on the real estate or habitational industry of what the market's saying. And it's a little bit more impacted primarily when the umbrella liability lines. So for example, low to moderate hazard, which we would consider at Ruston Association, this, this third-party report noted 25% or more increases. And excess liability, which is the, the tower on top of the umbrella, was 50% or more. So what we've seen is primarily an impact from COVID is a, is a enormous restriction of, of the market in terms of liability limits and participants, which drives, drives the rate up.
And that's coming right out of that six-page summary that we provided to the, I believe, the Fiscal Committee that some of you might have and some might not. We also just, for clarity, provided the full proposal, which is 60 pages, back to a number of your associates in June. So I think when you're referring to the full binder, maybe that's the full 60-page proposal with lots of detail and all the background, which gives the property schedules, the auto schedules, the in the marine, the terms, the dams, the, the locations of, of properties, overpasses, et cetera. It's, it's quite comprehensive as a reference document for the summary of your annual program.
That documents in the Dropbox.
Yes.
David, is that what fiscal had before, that 60-page document?
Yes, they did. It was at the Fiscal Committee.
So it was discussed publicly then?
Yes, many of the, many of those, Doug and Zach went through many of those slides publicly, yes.
Thanks, Hank. For the, to answer John's question specifically, the full binder summary was not provided, but there were pieces extracted.
The 60-page report?
Yes. I think if, if I'm not misrepresenting it, Dave, in past years, you were able, you, we discussed, or the, the Board discussed the entire 60 pages or whatever the summary was in open, open session, is that correct?
Correct. The Fiscal Committee saw the entire binder, the 60 pages in their fiscal meeting, and then passed that on to the Board for their review. That was prior, that, that did not happen last year. That happened prior years. Last year, that did not happen. And this year, we have not seen the binder as well.
Okay, so do we have any questions, Doug and Zach, that would help us in making our decision to take action this year on the insurance premium renewal?
I have a couple, Julie. It's not clear to me, it's not clear to me. So if we look at page 45 of the full report, most of the carriers listed there have the policies expiring on July 1st, 2020. The only exception being the pollution liability insurance. So Doug and Jack, are the, have those dates been updated in fact?
But those dates have been extended based on the request of you all back at the beginning of the policy period. So we're in an extension right now.
Yeah, our, our insurance premium runs July 1st to June 30th.
Right. But, but it's, so the expiration date has been extended. And, and what is the drop dead date on that now?
Last week. So the, so it's extended, but it's our intent to go back. If you choose to renew all this coverage, it's our intent to go back and maintain the 7-1. Our underwriters are in a, holding the, the bound coverage in an extension form, except the dams.
Right. And that we did approve back in June 30th, I think it was, or close to it.
We're, we're dealing with reinsurance and some, some complicated placement matters. And so we've asked those underwriters to accommodate as best they can, and they have. And so to answer your question more directly, we're, we need bind coverage.
Thank you. So, so having clarified page 45, when you look on page six, the only carriers listed there as having given us quotes are AIG, Aspen, and Market, Markle, Evanston. Hanover's not mentioned there. So what, where, have they given us a quote or what's happening there?
So the summary of the, the actual coverage by line of coverage and premium by line and carrier is in that same document on page five.
So Hanover, I, I, I don't need to know. So Hanover has given us a quote?
Yes.
Okay. I, I, because I didn't see it on six, I was a bit concerned. Thank you.
Yes, sir. And Hanover is the incumbent. Hanover is the carrier that I'm speaking to. And I say what a benefit it is to have the relationship you've had with them for some time. The property, well, we'll get into that later, but yes.
It was clear on 45 that they're the incumbent carrier, but I didn't know there about the quote. One final question. On page 44, why doesn't Ruston Association need errors and omission coverage and professional liability insurance coverage?
It's a good question. So it's our understanding, you know, professional liability errors and omissions would be to cover the entity if it was managing properties for third parties. And based on our understanding of it being a self-managed, if you will, organization, you couldn't literally sue yourself. And so unless we misunderstand that, you wouldn't have the ability to file a claim if it were, you know, an organization that existed just to manage your own entities at that.
And similarly, because we don't give legal opinions to third parties, that's why we don't have, for example, legal errors and omissions, is that?
Exactly right. So if you were a Ruston Association managed Fairfax, you know, association, that would be a third unrelated party. And they could, for example, sue you for mismanagement of those professional services.
Okay. And Tony, do you agree with all that?
Yes.
That, that was a yes?
Yes, John, I do. Where errors and omissions is for architects, professionals, contractors, things like that. We don't need that. We don't, the service we provide is as a steward of the common areas and not in any sort of professional capacity.
Those are my questions, thank you.
Then I have two quick questions. I know John mentioned page six and Doug had said page five. I don't see Hanover on page five. I have marketplace realities, so am I, are my numbers off?
It's, it's only because the initial document that was 60 pages had a lot more detail. And then we put together a summary after the fact for the first board call. So marketing summary is page five on the detail that we didn't include that on the, the only five-page summary. That marketing summary is just a reflection of the additional carriers we approached for quotes this year.
So where would I find Hanover? So it's not in the 60-page document then?
It is on page 45.
Page 45 is the incumbent carrier?
Yes.
Okay. And my second quick question is, Dave Kerr had a few questions that Hank shared with us. I guess my question is to Dave and Hank, are you satisfied? Do you have answers to those questions? One was the deductible, the other was the vehicles, the 78 vehicle to the 100 employees. Dave, are you happy with, do you have answers on that?
Well, I, I don't have answers on that, but there's nothing really at this point doing tonight to address that. I think those are questions we need to address going forward. And should we understand, you know, what are we covering? Do we, are we covering everything? Are we not covering everything? And, but I don't think there's anything there that we can discuss tonight that's going to create a change.
And the only comment I would make about when you look at the vehicle list and when you say we're 100 employees, you have to actually factor in when we go into the season and what all those vehicles are used for. And it was actually one of the things I, I brought up when I first started with the organization last year is why do we have so many vehicles? And you have to start thinking about all the grass that gets smote, all the trash cans and all the facilities that have to get addressed. How, how we swell with seasonals. We tripled, basically tripled our size once we go into the season. All the swimming pools, all of the pathways, 55 miles of pathways. So when you start to factor all that in and recognize that we are indeed moving trucks and vehicles all over the Ruston area to keep our amenities as pristine as absolutely possible. That's why you have so many vehicles. Does it mean we can't look for some efficiencies? We absolutely can and we will. But I think it's a little misleading to say we have, we have 100 employees and 78 vehicles. It's, it's not taking into account what goes on seasonally, which usually starts, you know, just prior to the cool season and doesn't end until, you know, late fall.
Thank you.
Hank, if I could just, this is Doug. If I could just add just a couple of things, just one comment really on the auto specifically. I mean, it is our job to tell you whether we think it's a, a good and fair arrangement. We think it's a very, very good program. Most personal lines automobile policies are more expensive than what you're paying on a per-vehicle basis for the annual premium for your auto fleet. And you look at the use and the exposure you have. And so this is one of those areas where Hanover is doing us a very solid deal on the business auto policy for the limits of coverage that you have in the exposure.
Thank you.
Karen?
Quick, what I hope is a quick question on.
Right, and then Karen, Karen had raised her hand.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead Karen, I can wait.
Good question. I was just curious as to how much the premium was reduced as a result of the cancellation of camps?
30, 30,000 was a flat. So it's extracted from the, the 30,000 is withheld from the going-forward proposed premium because we didn't factor the camps in. We talked about adding those back when it was appropriate and the camps were going to reopen. And we also extracted it from the expiring premium. So you'd have an apples-to-apples comparison.
So, so 30,000, okay. So, so the increase would have been 85,000 then?
No, it would have still been this. We, we would use the same number for expiring. And then if we're taking it out of the go-forward and we take it out of the expiring, it's a, it washes out of both sides.
Okay, thank you.
My question was if, if we provide, if we as an organization provide an opinion to our own members that is incorrect and they were to sue us, would, would we have to have, would that be covered under just a, the liability policy or would that be again, under errors and omissions?
That would be under your directors and officers' coverage.
Okay.
So we do have coverage under certain circumstances for a lawsuit from a member.
Correct. And those, and those policies, last year, we actually placed that with Cincinnati on a three-year policy term to lock the rates in for you, which we can tell you right now is, is extremely beneficial. So that renews and we won't have to renew that again until 2022. But the limits are annual, annually reinstated.
The limits, yeah, the limits are reinstated annually. That does also, we talked about professional coverage. That policy also has employed lawyers' coverage within the body of that DNO policy.
It's a $5 million limit with unlimited defense outside the limits.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions?
Julie, I have a question for us. So this is listed as, at least on the current agenda which we've adopted. But I guess we could amend it, amend it if necessary. It, it has this purely as a discussion matter. Is some action required of us tonight so that we can settle this matter?
I didn't realize that it didn't have action on there because certainly that was part of the agenda intent was to review this and approve it because there wasn't. was to review this and approve it because there wasn't a change.
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we amend the current item D to change the disposition part from discussion to discussion and action.
I would second that. Could I have a vote? A show of hands? I see Sarah. I see myself. I see Karen and Bob. So we've, we've got the group. So amended. Now, if no one has any more questions, and I don't see a real need for us to go into executive session based on what we've covered, even though that is on the agenda, unless someone has a need or desire to get addition, yes, Bob?
I would like to go into brief executives.
Fine. May I have a motion to move into executive session?
So move.
Thank you, Karen.
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Shall we head to executive session, please?
Do you all want us to?
Yes. Yes. Do we have everyone back again? I see our members, so that's good. I see Doug, et cetera.
Yes, Doug and Zach are here.
Right, and David and everyone else. So Karen, would you please read us our cleansing? You're on mute. Move that the Rest and Association Board of Directors certifies to the best of each member's knowledge that only those matters appropriate for executive session of a pending contractual nature, personnel and or and to consult with legal counsel were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during executive session.
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor? We've got all six. Thank you. So moved. I would like to make a motion to move to instruct the CEO to execute the necessary contracts in order to bind the association's insurance coverage for the upcoming year with the total cost being 609,707.63. I probably have a better way of saying that, but that's the amount, 609,707.63. That total cost does not include any insurance premiums for camps. And we'll address those when and at the time that we have camps. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
I see all six hands. Form that passes.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, I second that one. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. See you all soon.
Bye-bye.
Enjoy.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Take care, everybody.
Same to you.